Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, September thirteenth, 2018. Before we begin the meeting, if we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. The six-thirty timeframe is godsend because we get out earlier, but it's very difficult with school sports and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
So, it is. I'm hoping that you guys are not under too much pressure to get here at that time. I apologize for it, but it's better getting out early. Yes, I'm sure you'll all agree. Okay, so to start off our meeting, I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of August thirtieth, 2018, executive session minutes of August thirtieth, 2018, and acceptance of warrants ten P nineteen, twelve P nineteen, and eleven B nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any discussion on any of those? All in favor?
There was a lot.
Hi, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Okay, and we have our student rep Chloe Martins here again with us another year.
Yay!
Thank you.
Senior year.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
How could that be?
How are things going Chloe?
Um, good. It's only been a little more than a week since we've been back to school.
Yep.
Um, we had our club fair today, so we're just kind of getting back swing of everything. Open house last week, so meeting with teachers. Sports are doing well. Football won last week. They have a game tomorrow at home. It's the first out of three we have this year, so definitely make it if you can. It's at seven AM.
Three.
Yeah.
Go Royals!
They actually had a great game. It was thirty-five, thirty-four.
Yeah.
And won last week, which was fantastic.
It came from behind. It was like fourteen to thirty-four at the time.
Yeah, we were nervous being there.
Then the quarterback got injured and we just kept going.
Oh, is that what happened? Yeah. It was a great game. Still a great game. And you said field hockey won yesterday?
Yeah, field hockey won yesterday. It was our first game. Um, I think boy soccer won last week.
They did.
I think they won last Friday.
Playing tonight?
Yeah, at six, so I don't, I don't love.
Triton.
Yeah.
And again tomorrow at home.
Oh.
Yep, so it's back-to-back games.
Okay. So the varsity girls lost?
Yeah, they lost today.
JV won.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, we have a field hockey game tomorrow, too. Cross-country did really well, I think, earlier this weekend their meet. A lot of like individual wins, that was good. Um, yeah. Golf was also today and they had another meet earlier this week, too. The play this year was announced. It's the Seussical, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so that's gonna be fun, very vibrant. The costumes, definitely gonna be excited about that. And I think the homecoming is gonna be October twelfth.
Oh, good, we don't have to.
Yeah, we'll mark that, we'll mark that in pencil, though.
Yeah.
Highly erasable.
So it's already been a little trouble with that, but every other date is like.
Not as bad as last year, right?
Yes, and if we pick another date, there's gonna be trouble with that, too. So I think we're sticking with October twelfth.
Well, we take it from someone that knows, you cannot please everybody.
Yeah, that's what people are telling me, so I think it's just gonna stay that.
Isn't it have to be like a home game?
Well, that's. Yeah, that's our last home game.
There's only, there's only three.
That's our last home game, so we're gonna stick with it.
No pressure.
We're gonna stick with it.
Good. Um, I was just gonna ask you something. Oh, did I hear that there is a stand-up comedy?
Yeah, I signed up for that.
Wow, funny.
Um, it's not like an official club yet. It's just they need to see out what the numbers are and that they could get funding, but um, yeah, I signed up for it, so.
Was it like improv?
Very cool.
Is it like improv or you don't know?
No, exactly. This is the first year.
That'll be fun.
Yeah, it's run by, uh, Mr. Murphy, so we'll see. We'll see.
Yes, we will see.
I heard there's quite a few people on the list, though. I think that's great.
Yeah, I think it's like ten to fifteen. That was first lunch, so I don't know about second lunch. It could have been like thirty.
Yeah, Mr. Patel and Mr. Murphy have told me that they sometimes go up to New Hampshire to someplace and do stand-up comedy, so I think that's an interest of his.
Oh, I didn't know that.
We should go some night. I just had visions.
Just saying.
I'll be heckling them.
It's awesome.
So you had two new administrative faces to come to school.
Yeah, it's been doing, it's been going well.
Great.
Definitely, no, yeah, I am, I like, I like the, I don't know what to do.
The new regime.
Yes, I do, I do. I like it a lot. I think it's going smoothly and I think everyone likes the principal and our new vice-principal, so.
And they're welcoming both of them into Georgetown.
Oh, yeah, like in the morning, always outside, always saying hi. So very nice, so yeah.
I'm talking about the kids welcoming them.
Oh, oh, yeah, so they're very welcoming, but I think the kids are very welcoming. I haven't, we've all been good positive feedback, so.
Oh, great, that's great.
Yeah.
And I did see the principal at the soccer game today, so I appreciate that. I think that's wonderful.
Wow.
It's always nice to see your face there. Um, so good. It's gonna be a great year. I'm really excited for it.
Yeah, I think it is, too. I'm excited for Disney this year, too.
Yes.
That's exciting, yeah.
Yep, Disney, my daughter's very excited.
I'm waiting a while for that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Well, I'm happy to have you back again.
I'm happy to be back.
Okay, um, so we're just gonna change the agenda around a little bit. We're gonna have the PTA come on up. So we have Elizabeth Devere here, and you're on the executive committee?
I am the secretary.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I'm on the executive committee, exactly.
Perfect, so sit right down.
Yeah, come on and sit down.
Get yourself comfortable.
Right there is perfect. Tell us how things are going so far this year?
Sure. Hello, school committee.
Hi there.
I'm Elizabeth Devere, as you just said. I'm the secretary for the executive board and I'm also marketing communications team. So if you get the blank newsletter, that's all me.
Yeah, you do a great job with it.
Thank you. So we have an awesome team this year on our executive committee. We have the same leadership we had last year. Erin Duggan is president, Jen Morrissey, vice president, myself and Catherine Twist as treasurer, and then just a wonderful team. We have some returning folks and I think maybe only one brand-new, never-before-seen-on-the-PTA member, but we think she knows a little bit about education, but it's Cheryl.
She doesn't know.
Yeah, she, she has a variety of directions, backgrounds, so it's all good.
That should be great.
And we have a great plan for this year. Several give-back opportunities, starting with, we already had the tea and tissues event last week where we welcomed the kindergarten families bringing their little ones to school for the first time and gave them the tissues and all that, helped them adjust.
It was well-attended.
Did you have to give any tissues?
I actually wasn't there, but they always have them there and I'm positive they get used.
Sometimes.
The tissues part is.
There were lots of tears from the adults.
Oh, yeah.
It was well-attended.
Good.
Is it really? Good, good to know. And then in a week from tomorrow, we've got movie night, which we're really excited about, which is an outdoor movie. We're gonna have it right on the grounds at Penbrook, and it's just a really fun community event. Everybody's welcome to come for free, bring, you know, towels and snacks and kids running around, so it's just gonna be like a really good, feel-good kind of membership, community event. October fourth, we have our general session and we're looking forward to that, and let's see. Then we have a couple of big fundraisers. The two big fundraisers of the year are something called Genevieve's, which is, you know, it's like a selling opportunity kind of thing, and they have some local things. They have a big wide range, just like the bags thing that we did last year, and some local things from Portland, Maine, that we think is pretty cool. And then casino night in January, which you've seen before, and that's, that's our big fundraiser. And then some littler fundraisers. We've got a restaurant night, the book fair, and maybe that is it. Oh, the box tops as well. We've got those going, all, the box tops going all year.
What is the cookie walk?
The cookie walk is in December, it's part of the holiday fair, where just everybody bakes some cookies and then people pay for like a bag or a tin and they get to walk along and pick whatever cookies they want. And, you know, I think it's like they can have a few, like a small number for a couple dollars or more for a few more dollars, so, and it adds up.
Great idea.
It's really fun. And you know holidays and cookies.
Such a variety of cookies, too.
Yeah, oh, exactly.
And the holiday fair is so much fun.
It's so fun.
I mean, there's just many, many things you can look at and buy and shop and see people.
Exactly.
It's a great event.
Exactly.
If you're in early November, you will be after.
It is in early November. Let me just double-check here. Uh, I guess the date, I don't have the date down on this sheet.
It says November, but.
But that sounds right.
It's a great Georgetown tradition.
Exactly.
Yeah, the date is out there, though, because.
Is that right?
It was posted last night at Penbrook Pin Night.
Oh, okay, okay.
Check the website.
Yeah, is it the first weekend in November?
It's usually early November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I forget the date, but.
What is the PTA website?
What, what's the URL?
Yeah.
I think it's Georgetown-PTA.org.
Dot org.
I feel like there's a, like a my in there. I should know, because I work on that, too, but off the top of my head, I'm blanking on the actual URL. Although I will tell you, there was a complication last year because there was an old website that we were not updating and a newer website that we were updating. So if you went to Google and put in Georgetown, Mass., PTA, you would get both, which is very confusing, but I got rid of the old one. So if you do Google it, you'll get exactly to where you need to be.
Georgetown-PTA.com.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, dot com.
Thank you.
Yeah, dot PTA dot com, yep. Good. Well, you guys do such a great job. We appreciate all the time that you've put into it. I know it's, it's a lot of hard work and you do a lot of really great things, giving back to the schools, the fun, the field trips and things like that, I think are wonderful because that way it does touch every single child and, you know, not just like the ones that sell the, you know, wrapping paper, things like that. So I appreciate that and I love the fact that you still do, do things like that, and I also love the fact that you still keep the book fair going. That's always a great event. I'm sure Chloe can, can recall those words back in Penbrook.
Yeah, I do, I remember every year. I bought so many books. I read like half of them.
Yeah, but it is, it's a great event. You guys do a really good job.
Thank you so much. We have just a great, a great team, a lot of really committed members.
Yeah, a lot of energy.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they have some other interests this year, too, like the rec center, you know, they're very much involved in the planning of that and they'd like to be involved with some, some of the funding for that.
That's right, that's exactly right.
And then one of the things we always appreciate is the field trips.
That's right.
Because, you know, it costs a lot of money for families and just being able to have, you know, Kiev have a thousand dollars or something like that.
Kiev, exactly, exactly.
I mean, that's all really important.
That's right.
Plantation, that's an expensive field trip.
Yeah, and they support, they've been supporting the peer ment- peer mediation, peer mentor program at the middle high school. So, you know, the group of mentors gets trained, but then it really touches a lot of other children. So, you know, there have been a lot of other things that you guys have continued to help with and it really does make a difference.
Right, that's right. Those are our, our big monetary give-backs, the field trips. We're doing two speakers on programs for the community. The rec center this year is, is a big push. Camp Kiev, peer mentoring, and also two five-hundred-dollar grants for seniors. So, um, so that's, that's like really the heart of the PTA and what we're, what we're here for.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you. I look forward to a very successful year with you guys. And Cheryl, you are our PTA liaison, so.
I can fill you in here and there.
Yeah, she keeps us posted with everything, which is, which is great.
We'll call on you all for the spelling bee again.
Yes.
Absolutely. We have some very.
Favorite events, yeah.
Experienced judges, moderators.
That's right, that's right.
Nobody likes to be the one that does the bing, though.
I know.
Were you the binger last year? Yeah, okay.
With vigor, no, not just like.
I remember the year that George Mokler, which many of you know but don't know, he was, he was on the school committee as chair, and they asked him to do it and, you know, he went bing and it was fairly loud and the kid cried.
Aww.
He said, "I can't do this job." He said, "I cannot make kids cry."
Yeah, but they learn it at school, they're gonna use it, so you know.
We also need our helper that we had last year.
Yes. Connor?
Connor Dirk.
Yes, oh, he was amazing.
We go and console the kids.
Went right on stage with tissues.
Did so well.
Hat on the back.
Tea and tissues, spelling and tissues.
Exactly.
That's funny. Well, that's good. I look forward to the casino night. That is always a really fun event.
It'll be a lot of fun.
Good.
As always, yeah.
And the give-back things are great, too, because you, you like to have the families also be able to just relax and hang out rather than have their wallets out all the time, which sometimes you feel like that's, that's what happens. But that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do, do I need to wait for you to approve or?
Um, you're actually gonna approve them?
Well, I think you, I think you probably approve the fundraisers, right?
Yeah.
You just say goodbye, you know, just.
Um, yeah, so I will make a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 PTA fundraisers with grateful appreciation for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Second?
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out tonight, too.
Thank you.
You tell Erin you did awesome.
Oh.
She can watch you on TV.
Thanks, guys, thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks. Okay, so we have a couple of field trip approvals that we're gonna talk about. Is Kaitlin coming?
I don't know. I think Kaitlin told me she was coming.
Okay, so we'll wait a little while, then, for Kaitlin.
Yeah, maybe just the others and then Kaitlin.
Should we not know about the new parts?
Oh, maybe.
You know what, Colin, that's probably true.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay, well, that's fine, it's close to.
Do you two ladies wanna come up together? We can talk about the individual.
You wanna come, too, Dan?
Individual.
You can come, too.
Yep, and, perfect.
Nancy, do we have copies of the policy? We may can hold them soon.
Of the what?
Field trip policy.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming out tonight. And Dan, thank you also for, for being here. We appreciate it.
I'm so happy to see you all.
Thank you.
I know, taking on such an important job.
So let's talk about the Quebec City field trip first. I am very glad to see you here because we put a lot of work into this one.
I know you did, and thanks.
So I'm glad to see that it's.
I'm coming.
Right, I'm glad to see that it's coming to fruition. I'm glad that you were so patient with us. I know that we had a lot of going back and forth and you worked so well with us and I appreciate that. I know that your heart is there with, for the kids.
Absolutely.
But we just wanted to make sure that we were also doing the right thing by the kids with this new policy that we put together. So why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
So it will be, hopefully, February first, second, third, fourth.
Yep.
Two thousand and nineteen, and it just happens to coincide with the winter carnival, which is a really exciting time in Quebec. It's one of the world's largest winter carnivals, and it just adds to the excitement of being in a French-speaking country, I mean, in the middle of winter, with the excitement of the ice canoe racing, parades, they've got fun activities for all ages. One of the activities that's on our schedule that we actually did, I think when, when we went five years ago, they're five or six years ago, was the snow tubing at a, at a park just outside Quebec, and they, they just loved it. I mean, you know, and of course, all of the attendants were speaking French, and there's such a great opportunity also to speak French. And I always think of the first time I crossed the border into Quebec province and I was observing the students and, you know, watching their response and looking around, you know, look for the French signs, and it was just an amazing experience to, for myself and for them to see, we really are in a French-speaking country. I mean, this really does exist, that just four and a half hours or five hours away, depending on how fast you'd ride, with the bus driver.
And did you see the confidence in them, that they were like ready to go and, and utilize the skills that they had learned?
Oh, absolutely. You know, just even, I had talked to them ahead of time, watch out for signs like exit off the highway, simple things like that, you know, street signs, all of that. And then, of course, when we got into the heart of Quebec and the restaurants, the ordering food and questioning things and speaking to people, they, they're really relaxed and really enjoyed it. It was just a realization that this just doesn't belong in the classroom, that French really does exist and is useful as close as five hours away, where you have almost ten million French speakers. So I, I thought that was so exciting, and I know, I know it's not France, it doesn't have to be France. You know, I, I always tell them, we don't have to go to England to learn perfect English. We can, you know, we can go to the United States or even Ireland, but, so that, you know, it, it is a great exposure to the French language and to French North American culture, and they're such a huge influence from the French historically throughout, not just Canada, the United States, but it's really, really see it when you're in, in Quebec province. And they, they absolutely loved it, that group who attended about five years ago.
Really?
Do you remember, Mary, about like how it was distributed, like you have French one all the way to French four or five?
Well, we have French five sometimes, so it would be open to the students just in the high school.
Right.
So in my French one class, I have maybe around eight kids who are high school kids and fourteen, excuse me, maybe eleven and eight, eleven of one and eight of the other.
So were, were they distributed, like when you went the last time, were there some kids French four, French three, French two? So was it across the border? Did you find it was mostly the kids like in three and four that?
Oh, I, I understand your question, I see. Um, that time it was probably mostly the French, French two, three, and four, not as many French ones.
Okay.
A few French ones.
Okay.
And, and, and they, they were fine.
And it's open to?
Open to high school, any, any students taking French at the high school.
Okay.
And it was a wonderful experience. It was, it was, you know, four days, not long enough, but, and, you know, not very, very expensive.
No.
Um, I mean, the, the, any, when you go abroad with the plane and the airfare, it's a, it's a little bit more, which would be the France trip, which we, we had three, of which we had three. So this price includes the hotel, breakfast dinners, and one of the dinners is like a voucher they get for their meal at the snow park, and then it's a two-authentic restaurants, Café de Paris, and one's at a, it's at a, it's at a really nice Quebecois French restaurant with excellent food, and, and, and then at lunch, we just go to different places.
Mm-hmm.
It also includes admission to historic sites and also a trip out to Saint-Anne-de-Bouquet, which, where we go to a sugar shack and taste, you know, look at maple syrup in the process, maple butter and that type of thing. Um, we go to the, to the, to the big shrine of Saint-Anne's, which they actually liked. So there's actually a lot in Quebec.
Sounds like it. So Mary, in order for this to actually happen, how many, what's the minimum that you're looking at for students?
Um, so we're all, he'd like, the company would like to fill the bus, of course, but he can provide a smaller bus if less than thirty go.
Okay.
I sense there's interest in about thirty kids, and then one chaperone can go per ten kids to, you know, look after the, their group of ten.
Okay, so you being one chaperone, then you're gonna, you're gonna open it up to parents or what are you gonna do with these?
Well, usually what's happened is these, you know, we would go with teachers in the foreign language department, and then if anybody in the staff were interested, and if several were interested, they would maybe draw names from a hat, as happened before.
Oh, okay.
And then if, if we're still short of chaperones, they, they would probably, you know, invite parents.
Okay, so you'd go within first?
Yes, that's what's happened in the past.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
They know the kids.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm sure the kids would prefer three or something.
Chaperones.
Yes, when we went before, I think we had maybe a little over thirty in our group and we had three chaperones and it worked really well.
Yeah, and it is affordable.
Right.
Definitely looks like it.
Will you do any fundraisers? I know you listed some you might do, but have you thought about doing one or two?
Well, you know, pending the trip being approved, then I would meet with the students and ask them if there was interest.
Yes.
And we would plan on some of the things I mentioned, which we did before, a couple of times for the trips to France, and, you know, one year I think we ended up, it wasn't great, but it wasn't too bad. I think maybe eighty or eighty-six dollars off each person's cost, which was.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
It was nice.
Because they probably bring, do they bring spending money with them or?
Yes. Their, only other expense really is lunch, which seems to be usually the case with travel companies, they provide breakfast and dinner and we, we buy our own lunch.
Because they know where you are. It's easy.
So you have to tell them soon?
Yes.
So if we approve this tonight, is it gonna, like, the discussion is gonna start tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, and then you have a deadline by, like?
Well, um, the company direct travel, it, it looks like they want their first deposit on October fifteenth.
Yeah, that's right around the corner.
And so if it's, it's not, so not such a great burden because it's broken out between October and December, December tenth.
Oh, they play installments.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And last time I did it, I also had a meeting of parents of kids who were interested, and so we talked about, you know, all of these things, and it was kind of good to have that meeting. So, you know, I'll speak with Mr. Richard Sieff.
We wanna still do that.
For this trip.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions about it? So they'll miss Friday and Monday?
Yes.
And what hotels are you gonna stay in?
So the hotel is.
It's here.
The Comfort Inn.
Right.
And we stayed there before. It's actually very nice and they give a very nice breakfast. The kids were, were pleased.
Oh, good.
Like a continental breakfast or something.
Yes. They did have nice croissants, things like that, you know, lots of good food.
In the future, you know, what's even cheaper? You might have to do it not in February, though, but Old Orchard Beach has a ton of French people.
Yes, right.
We go to Old Orchard Beach and when I, when I'm there, I feel like I'm in France. All the Quebec people, that's where they vacation.
Yes.
That's a harder sell. I don't think.
Hey, Orchard Beach is fun.
Is there anything for students that can't afford it? You know, is there any type of fundraising or is there any money set aside for any of those students?
Well, I'm not sure if it's still there, if it was ever used for other trips, but we had an incident one time in France where I think we had to bring a kid, we had to go to the airport to bring a kid whose passport was to expire after the trip, and the mom did give some money, so.
Right, I forgot her name.
She was wonderful.
Yes.
I think she, she gave a thousand dollars or something.
Yes.
Oh, I can see her face.
Yeah, and that was, she wanted that.
She wanted to make sure there wasn't any.
Yeah, that there was.
So there is something for an opportunity for a student that might not otherwise be able to afford it?
Yes.
Natalia, was it Natalia?
Was that her name? Natalia?
I think, that's right, that's right.
Yes, Mrs. Natalia.
Farrah.
That's right.
Farrah.
Farrah, Natalia was the.
You know, when I introduced the trip, I usually have, I used to tell the students, you know, if, if there are any of you who really want to go but have financial difficulties, and I always tell them the story of how I wanted to go to France and at the time couldn't afford it when I was in high school, and so then, but I said, "Come see me privately sometime this week." You know, I would say that, and then, well, one or two did, but I think it was last year when the trip didn't happen anyway, so we'll see what happens this year.
Yeah, I think that would be a great way to segue into them, you know, if they, they are running through their mind saying, "Oh, I don't know if we'll be able to do it," at least you open that up.
Yes.
To them and just give them an opportunity to, and I'd love to know if, how many students that would be, and we could try and figure out how we could accomplish that.
Because a thousand dollars would almost cover two kids.
Mm-hmm.
It's twelve sixty.
We just wanna make sure that, you know, for everybody that wants to go would be able to somehow.
Mm-hmm, so I will definitely, you know, stress that, that, and ask them to see me privately on the wrong time.
The thing is, there are a lot of trips going on.
Yeah.
So, you know, and parents, parents might just say, "You know what? This is, you know, you've got the Disney trip going on, you have the possibility of the Puerto Rico trip, you've got this one." So it could, it could come down to the parents can't afford it, but.
Right, make them make a choose.
Yeah, you have to make and choose, absolutely. But I think it's great and I'm so glad, Mary, again, that you were so patient with us to, to let us figure this all out.
Thank you.
Because it was a very important policy that we needed to really identify different areas that could be impacted during a overnight trip. So again, thank you for.
Thank you. So it sounds like in our definitions, we're picking, they're saying this is number five.
Yeah.
School-sponsored and poor company managed. Right?
That's what I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Now.
Yep.
What kind of passports do you need to go to Canada?
Well, you can actually have the pass card without having the passport.
Okay.
So if, if they don't foresee themselves traveling out to, you know, to Europe or beyond the US, Canada, Mexico.
Use a license.
They can just have a pass card. And it's a little less money also.
Oh, right, good. And so just to avoid any passport issues going forward, like my son went to Europe with his, his college and they asked for a copy of the passport before he went, you know, so like everything was definitely ahead of time.
Ahead of time.
Nobody showed up at the gate.
Yeah, so that might just be an idea to, you know, make sure that everyone has the proper documentation.
Yes, and just when you think you've everything covered, that one incident where the kid's passport expired three months after the return date instead of six.
Well, and you can't travel on a passport that even is six months behind, you know, like so if it's six months and still, and some people don't know that, then you can't, yeah. Yeah, if it's gonna expire six, like five months after your travel, that doesn't work. You can't do that.
I know.
It's the airlines.
Yeah, because it's all about paying.
Isn't what it appears to be.
Yeah.
Right. That's interesting, like you still have an active passport, why would they?
It's the airlines. It's because you would be, most, in a lot of cases, it's a six-month visa and if you'd be overextending your visa, if your visa would overextend your passport date, it gets messy.
Oh, wow.
But I'll definitely let them know of both options, you know, in a letter home too, about the trip and that they can choose to get the passport or the pass and to get the application at the post office for either.
And maybe ask for a, you know, cop, a picture, a copy of the passport a few, couple months ahead of time.
Yes, very good idea.
The company might do that.
We usually have one with us traveling just in case of getting lost, but it might be nice just to triple check that the dates are correct.
Right. Just a suggestion. I think it's a great, great trip, I'm so glad you're doing it.
Thank you.
It's gonna be awesome for students.
You too.
Anybody else wanna ask me something about it? No? Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the trip to Quebec City Friday, February first, twenty nineteen through Monday, February fourth, twenty nineteen, as presented by Mary Hayes.
Thank you very much.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd love to know how many people you get interested in it. I think, I think.
You're gonna get quite a few.
I think so too.
Oh, I think so.
Good, because it is really affordable.
And it's a good time.
It's a good occasion too.
Yeah.
Good.
And I'm not, I'm gonna ask this now, obviously you fully approve your. No, but I've talked to you, we talked, when you first came here over the summer, we talked about trips and abroad and things like that, and I know that you are.
Ask Dan where he's been.
Yeah.
Been on a, only over a dozen high school trips, chaperoning. I firmly believe that providing students with these opportunities is an important thing, responsibility of the school, because this may be students' only chance to travel to Quebec City or abroad and live in abroad in two different countries. And I, well, I'm biased and I know the value of it and I strongly support. So when they both approached me on it, it was an easy conversation, it's just a matter of going through the motions of it. And I believe that they have a great plan and will find it as, fine tune it as we get students enrolled and I'm excited to provide the opportunity. So absolutely, I support both of them.
Great.
And you went to China with students.
I just, yeah, I returned in April with twenty-four students, a tour through China.
Wow, that's awesome. I'm sure that was a once-in-a-lifetime experience for everyone.
Yes, and it is for everyone and that's a good point because it gave me the opportunity to know twenty-four students like I would never know them in the hallways. And I came back with just as rich experience and, you know, those relationships will last, you know, forever. So as we talk about student experience, this is also a great adult experience to work with kids and see them outside their environment rather than just hallways and classes. So I get just as much when I go on these trips as the kids do. Yeah.
Good, great. Well, thank you, Mary, thank you again.
Thank you.
We have a great time.
Thank you.
So now, Ms. Giannini is here to talk about a Puerto Rico trip.
Yes, I would like to propose a Puerto Rico trip. I haven't done a field trip before and I've been here over thirteen years, so I think it's time, I think it's time I do a field trip. So it's a five-day itinerary that I have here and I chose that because it's so, it's short notice, they don't need passports, which is a good thing, but with a five-day itinerary within all of February vacation, they've got a little wiggle room, so maybe that can allow them to maximize some good decent prices. I like the agenda of the five, the five day. I mean, they do fit a lot into it. They start with a San Juan walking tour. They go from San Juan in the north of Puerto Rico to Ponce in the south of Puerto Rico. And in San Juan, they visit El Morro, which is a sixteenth-century fort.
Wow.
One of my students, actually in my Spanish four class, he's new this year, his name is José. José, and I have his, I've got José and Josué, they're chosen from Lawrence, their mother's name is Josefina, they're all Jays.
Oh, isn't that?
And his dad is, he's, one parent's Dominican, one parent's Puerto Rican, he got so excited when I mentioned El Morro, because I'm sure he'd love to go. So there's that. And then they do a coffee plantation tour, they have a trip to a historic firehouse, they've got a salsa lesson, they do a bioluminescent bay tour. I'm, I got a feel for this last year, I really couldn't go forward with asking anybody because Mr. Lucia suggested that I wait until this year to get the ball rolling, so I didn't want to get them too excited, but just to get a little feel for it, I asked who'd be interested. And the Spanish four class, who Amanda now has as AP, seemed very interested at the time. But since I got a little feel from my Spanish four class, I have twenty-seven students in my Spanish four class.
Oh, thanks.
And twenty people raised their hand and I reminded them, you know, you also have a band, how many of you that are interested are also going on the band tour, because they might have to make a decision as well. But it seemed, at least with me, they were interested. And Amanda Gerard is going to ask her Spanish three and AP. I was thinking of keeping it to Spanish three, four and AP. If you don't want me to, then I'll open it up to all of them. I wanted to do it that way just because they have the tools to speak the language and it'll maximize the possibility of really having like an immersion experience.
I think that would be more your call than ours.
I'd like to do that, I mean, I'd like to.
I think what you think is right.
I think you should try that.
Yeah.
I mean, just a committee agree, I don't think that we should be dictating to you.
That's what I'd like to do.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Then it'll inspire the Spanish two students to move up to Spanish three next year.
Something to look forward to.
Yes, yep.
So what is the actual dates?
I don't have a date because, like, I didn't, it was a chicken egg thing, I didn't want to secure anything.
Right, without knowing.
I just wanted to see if it was gonna be approved and then we could go forward and.
So are you thinking that the children will not be missing school?
No, they won't miss school.
So it will totally.
It'll be within February vacation.
Within the February vacation.
I don't anticipate them missing school. I mean, I, I gave Angela Parks my contact, the date of the, Saturday of February vacation to the following Sunday, but a five-day period within that time.
So if they left on Saturday, you count, would you count Saturday as a day? Or is it from the time they get to Puerto Rico?
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, they come back on Wednesday. It's a pretty short trip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they'd still have some February vacation.
They still have some vacation, so would I, and it gives them a little wiggle room. Maybe they can get a difference in price if they have some flexibility.
But it's mostly, it's rebuilt enough for tourism.
Yeah, I looked into it, I've been Googling it ever since. And we also got some recommendations from people, Angela Parks sent me some blurbs of positive recommendations of people that have been there on school trips since Hurricane Maria.
Okay.
And I know that there are probably still parts in the mountainous regions that are still suffering from the hurricane.
Without.
But it's not the parts that we go to. So it seems to be, everything's operational again from the hurricane. I don't think anybody, anything that we would do would be affected by it.
Okay.
Yeah. They've, you know, the tours have, EF has taken tours, educational tours there since. It's a little pricey, I mean, I, to me it is, it's about twenty-two hundred.
That was my thought too.
Yeah, it is a little pricey.
But Mary, we were talking about it before the meeting, about what did the students pay when they went to France? Which was about the same number of days, right?
Right, so our last trip to France was probably, and, three years ago, so I think then it was up to twenty-eight hundred.
I guess if you keep it in perspective, it's not.
And I, I know that the.
Vacation.
And then the more who attend, the.
The cheaper it is.
So, you know, I just sense a lot of Spanish students would want to go, I would sense it would end up being around two thousand.
It might go down, if there's thirty-five or more students, it'll go down. This is like a cutoff number.
Yeah.
And Amanda hasn't asked, she's got two Spanish three classes and her AP class. But again, there's a lot of enthusiasm from the students.
Right.
There's also, you know, the trip in April, which might hinder their ability to be able to go.
Yeah, usually there's not as many choices.
Right.
Yeah. Is Amanda going too? Is she planning?
I don't think I can get her to go, no. She's got two kids and I don't think so.
So what will you do in terms of, will you do the same?
It would be the same thing, put it out to the foreign language department, put it out to the staff and then the parents.
Okay.
And of course, Mr. Richards, if you'd like to.
So for vacations. So for example, let's say you don't get the required number of kids, like I don't, let's say you get ten kids and it's not.
Okay.
Would you consider doing it next year if, if you think it is a conflict with the band trip?
Yeah, I would do that. Yeah, I would do that.
Because I think that, that's the only thing I can think of that might jeopardize your.
Right.
You know, your interest in it, it's just, it's gonna be a competing interest.
With the money.
With, well, with, with the money, right. And if you go someplace in April.
It's the minimum amount to go?
Is there a minimum?
There isn't, I wasn't given the minimum amount, but also their chaperones are six to one, because they, they'll consider it a, even though it's not really international because of Puerto Rico, they'll consider it that way, yeah.
So actually, probably you could go, you could run it if you had even six kids with one chaperone. But the chaperone would prefer, I remember with France, we had, I think, eleven and twelve kids. And we, we, with the eleven kids, I think we ended up, the other chap, we had another chaperone coming, we, we paid the difference just to have two adults.
I think that's wise.
I think that's a good idea too.
Yeah.
And if parents wanted to tack along, they, obviously they pay their own way, but they could go?
Sure.
We had that happen too in the past where, where parents came.
It's, so will the band, they'll be doing fundraisers too for the Disney trip?
I don't know, Caitlin?
Yeah. So I think there's gonna be a lot of fundraising for the trips. I don't know if that's gonna affect one, you know, if it's gonna affect one trip or another.
Well, maybe, maybe if you've got three, you can coordinate what they are, so everybody's not doing the same fundraiser.
I think we can and this is kind of a good problem to have, that kids have this rich experience to select going on these trips. It is competing and decisions will have to be made if there is, you know, interest with more than one trip. I'm happy to say that we're offering this at the high school for our students in order to take advantage of it. But we'll be sensitive to the financial needs of folks, that will be with all of our trips and I make sure there's scholarship available.
Especially for people with free and reduced lunch.
That will be pretty much the gauge, scholarship available for those who are already looking for assistance.
Right.
Not those who are choosing three trips and would like assistance, that's all different.
Right.
Yeah.
Bless you. The, the thing that, I'm just thinking now is, I know when the band had their first meeting for the, for the, for the Disney trip, they, there were a couple of parents that you had to give, I think, a hundred dollar deposit or something. And a couple of the parents had questioned, well, is it refundable? No, it's not refundable. Okay, well, I, I've been hearing that there's gonna be a Puerto Rico trip.
Ah.
If I put the, if I put the hundred, right, and now that we're approving it and we're already, I think, three payments in to the Disney trip.
Oh.
How, I just don't want those parents now to be like, you know, I would have picked Puerto Rico over Disney. I mean, I don't know if that's the case, obviously a couple of them, because they had said it at the meeting, like, you know.
Right.
So I don't know, I'm just wondering if that's gonna be.
Are these seniors? Because if they weren't seniors and you do it in another year, they could catch it in another year, you know?
The couple of the parents that did question it were parents of seniors.
Seniors.
So I suppose it's really up to the families, what direction they want to go in.
The thing is that the money you're three into the Disney and it's not refundable.
Right, so, but then that's their decision, you know, that they're going to.
But they didn't know back then, so it wasn't like they didn't think there was a decision at that point, because it was only, the Disney trip is the only one confirmed, you know what I mean? And they had heard through the grapevine that, oh, there might be a trip to Puerto Rico planned.
Right.
So.
To help avoid that in the future, what I hope to do is to have trips approved in springtime for the upcoming school year, so they're advertised well in advance and approved by school committees, so we can count on them going forward if we have the numbers and of course, if we have the numbers here. I think that will avoid it for the future.
Yeah.
April, May approval of all trips for the nineteen-twenty school year.
And I think with the transition, I do think Carolyn wanted to do it, you know, want to start it last year, because I know she talked to me early on. And then as she said earlier, Peter had sort of suggested that she, she wait and I know that, we talked and then Dan came on board and, you know, he, you know, he talked right away with her. And then she pretty much got the paperwork done. So I think it's, some of this just happened.
Well, hence the reason why that paperwork is dated in March, twenty eighteen.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I started to get the ball rolling then, but I still think Peter wanted to saddle him with all the other things, so.
I just want you to be aware that you may have parents calling you about that. And I do think it's something that we can certainly handle.
Yes.
You know, we can't.
And I think we just, the best we can do is explain to people, you know, how we got into the situation.
In the process and.
And that going forward, you know, the plan would, would be to, you know, to eliminate the problem.
Well, I think we're fortunate too in the fact that we do have dedicated staff members that want to do it.
Yeah.
You know, so it's really up to you guys to, to want to take the time out of your vacation to do that and it's not something that we can obviously, you know, tell you you have to do it. So I think with the parents, we just have to explain that to them, that, you know, it was just something in, you know, the process is this.
It was a timing, right.
And it wasn't at that point in time when the Disney trip was going, Puerto Rico trip wasn't even considered at that point.
Right. What is the cost of the Disney trip?
Caitlin, do you know?
It's like fifteen hundred.
Fourteen, yeah.
It's like fourteen hundred. And that's for four days, five?
Four, well, four full days.
Okay.
I know it's a really difficult situation for, you know, parents and seniors in this situation.
Yeah.
I, I will say, I mean, in college, there's often trips like this also offered that probably go to Puerto Rico, so it might not be, might look like a last chance, but it might not actually be a last chance.
Exactly, exactly. And it could be so rich in college too. I mean, that's when I went, that's when I went to Spain, like the best years, one of the best years of my life.
That's one of my questions when I look at colleges, is what are their study abroad programs?
Yeah.
And not only, you know, for semesters abroad, that's a long time, some students really aren't ready to do that, but they also have small, two-week, four-week trips.
They have shorter times, yeah. Yeah, intercession, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the beauty of these trips from high school is, it gives them a, a hunger to want to do a semester abroad or a summer abroad. I have had a few students who went on our very first French, uh, trip to France, who just couldn't wait when they got to college to get their semester back in France and just loved it.
Right, so this could prepare students to be able to embrace a semester abroad.
I have a procedural, I, I wanna start off by saying that I'm, I'm, I'm all for the trips and I've, I've, I've hosted some, I've been on some, I'm, I'm, I'm all for them. Um, I think my question, and probably for, for the coaches, is, and, and the superintendent, and I spoke earlier today, is what is the, what is the, the, the benefit, the value, if you will, of it being a school-sponsored trip as opposed to a non-school-sponsored trip, which, which is a sort of a, a technical definition? And the reason I'm asking this question is, and not to disincentivize, I love that it's over vacation. But in that it is entirely over vacation, we're not missing any school days, what makes this a school trip versus a, hey, I wanna take some kids from my Spanish class to Puerto Rico? And it's, it's a very similar program to, to Quebec City and, and you can absolutely draw comparisons. Um, but I see a trip that is happening over vacation, um, outside of the, you know, if we were to pick up this trip and put it into July, would it still be, would you still be coming before us as a school-sponsored trip, or would this just be something that you were planning on your own to, you know, I found an opportunity, would be great, and I'm not challenging you individually, don't worry.
Excuse me.
Also, I mean, at least as far as when I've worked with EF in the past, the money is going through EF, so it's not even like the money is flowing through the school to give it sort of the imprimatur of, of a school program. What's the benefit? 'Cause I sort of cynically say, well, why are we accepting liability on an enormous, wonderful experience and opportunity? But there's a lot that comes with it by us having it being a school-sponsored trip.
That's a good question.
That's a big question for somebody.
Excuse me, sorry.
I know, and that's, and, and there is a movement, and there is a movement of schools not to be officially sponsoring them.
But they have other sponsors.
Exactly. So, so I would love to know from a administrator's perspective and a principal's perspective, what the value, what the value is of, of being able to say that it's school-sponsored as opposed to not? And then I have reservations on the, on the kind of the superintendent's administrative side on the liability that we are accepting and managing.
So um, our two teachers are acting as agents of the school, and that defines it clearly as a school-sponsored trip. So, uh, they are actually working during this vacation as an agent of the school. A handbook applies, um, as where...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have a coffee.
Yeah.
If, if Mary decided to take a group, because outside of the being an agent of the school, uh, she wouldn't be allowed to solicit within the school, uh, and that, she would have to do that independently. So, it's that clear line, actually, you're an employer of the, you're an employee of the district, representing the district, representing a handbook, and we support this. If she had a wish to bring a group of kids out of the love of going to Quebec and the love of kids, uh, it would be completely exclusive of the school system, um, and she would not represent an agent of the town.
Right, it couldn't even be discussed during solicitation, it couldn't be discussed, you couldn't have meetings on, on school property.
After your, after work hours.
You couldn't utilize your school email to reach out to people, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and Michael and I, when we chatted today, I said, you know, I, I think we still have some work to do, just trying to do some of these definitions, because I think that both of them, to some extent, fall under number five, which is the school-sponsored and tour-managed. But I do, I don't disagree a hundred percent with what Michael's saying, because if you read the definition of a school-sponsored, of non-school-sponsored trip, it, it definitely fits. To me, kind of what's different, and I think Dan explained exactly what Michael and I talked about, is if EF Tours said, hey, um, we're gonna uh, take some students on the North Shore, um, you know, to, you know, to Puerto Rico. Have any interest? And Carolyn said, hey, I heard about this trip, you know, I'll, I'll go as, you know, I'll go as the chaperone, but it's completely EF Tours. You know, I feel like that, I think it has to do in my mind with amount of um, responsibility, you know, and involvement. Um, I know the tour companies very involved, but, you know, as Dan said, it's, it's really kind of an outgrowth of what's going on in school. So we're hoping our kids are gonna come back with a good experience that's, that's going to, you know, carry forward into their studies and...
Right, kind of like form a bridge too, right?
Yeah, so to me, it's like, in that non-school-sponsored, someone else is responsible more than we are. I feel like in this situation, we're more responsible, the way we've got it set up, is that we're more responsible than the, the agency. So I think it, for, for what I think we're feeling is it's hard to separate it from, from being school-sponsored. So that, I think that's the hard part, like, I don't, I don't know how to define that better. I think you're talking more about it being outside of the school day, right? That's, that's really where, where Michael's thinking about it. So would, would it be different, so if Mary, if we approve Mary's trip, but she misses school, and that's why she's basically getting the trip approved, 'cause she's, it is school-sponsored, I don't know that we wanna, we wanna communicate any kind of a message that just be, that the only, if you miss a day of school, then they're school-sponsored, you know?
It's a day of school.
That's the funny thing, 'cause every time we do get a presentation of this, we say, how many days are you missing? Well, you're coming to us saying, I'm not missing any, and now we're questioning you.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I said, I said...
I think my big thing uh, is, is what Dan had said in terms of the solicitation of the students. You know, it's during the school day, and I would assume that, leading up to the trip, you're gonna be talking about it in class, like, okay, when we go to Quebec, this is... I guess you have to be sensitive with that, because there are kids, exactly, there are kids that will be going.
That's also recognizing where everyone's going.
Meet after school.
But um, just the solicitation of the kids during the school day, to me, would make it school-sponsored.
Which I, and not to belabor a point, but if, if that's the only advantage, if you will, that doesn't seem like a great reason to make it school-sponsored, just so that you can bring it up in class and say, hey, let's go, or, you know, here's what we're gonna, here's the tour that we're gonna go on.
But I also believe just the whole basis behind it, the diversity, that, just the, the um, access to another culture that you're hearing about in a classroom, and then you actually go out and live it for a couple of days, that to me is, you know, you can't...
But I, I see what Michael's saying, is that if you have another agent, other than the school, that is willing to bring that on and take these groups, you know, to...
Yes, that would be non-school-sponsored.
That would be, right, non-school-sponsored, yet our students, you know?
But to get that information to EF to solicit, she would be utilizing Georgetown District's property to give that to the tour to solicit.
The names of the students.
So that wouldn't be, you couldn't do that.
Now, I prefer it be a school-sponsored, because I've encountered passport difficulties where students weren't allowed back in to the, uh, the country because of green cards, medical emergencies, uh, the list goes on that I've experienced, and I don't, uh, have experienced, and I don't wanna, you know, create paranoia on trips. But, uh, the list goes on, I've always been a crisis person, uh, when I've gone on these trips, and the tour company is helpful to a point. Uh, they stop to a point, and I'd prefer that there's a school official there to pick up those pieces and to trust our children to a school official rather than a for-profit company that's soliciting our children in town. Uh, so I'd rather have my children under my watch.
And I'm, I'm right there with you, but...
Totally agree.
Those things can very quickly cost a lot of money, and we're assuming that liability, which I think we need to be aware of, and if there's a medical, you know, and, and student's health insurance obviously comes to, into play, but student is sick in, in Puerto Rico, and I'm picking on you, and I'm sorry, student is sick in Puerto Rico and needs to be medevaced home, what happens?
Yeah, right.
And are we then, is somebody calling Carolyn saying, well, we gotta do it? And I would agree that we gotta do it, but where's the money coming from?
I actually think, I, I wanna read it again, but I also, I think we said in the policy that it would be the responsibility of the parent to get the child home.
The parent insurance covering that.
I think that's, it was listed here.
Yeah, but to say it, yeah, but to say it and it actually have it holed up, you know, if a parent was to question it.
I think that we say if the student is being sent home for just very reasons, we can't get them in trouble for getting sick.
Discipline areas, okay, maybe that is true. Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, I, I don't know, that's an interesting idea.
I would think that the health insurance of the, covering the child, cover that, you know?
It, it depends a lot on the insurance.
And you ha- and they have to have insurance in Massachusetts.
The companies do offer travel slash health insurance, travel for cancellation, and also health, and, and then the parents choose to buy it or not.
Yes, so I think that's important when you talk to the parents, is to let parents know all of those things.
And, and, just a case in point on what Mr. Richard said, so we went with Explorica one time, and we had the issue of the kid with the passport where I had to leave Versailles and take the train and go to, back to Paris, miss some of the trip. The, um, the people who work for Explorica did not want anything to do with it, that was put on the teachers. So when, you know, push comes to shove, we have to do, the, you know, was left up to us.
Right, because their business is the tour.
Right.
And it was with us and with me, of course, that the student felt most comfortable.
Right, of course.
If I had to go to the, go, before I stay in a hotel, go to the airport.
And so the parent felt more comfortable, having them go, they wouldn't want to release them to a tour person.
Yes.
And what would have happened, though, in that situation?
The tour would have gone on, and the tour would have continued where I was, um, stuck in Spain with, uh, students for three days, 'cause their green cards wouldn't allow them back into the United States, and they got sick at the time, and I had to find a doctor and housing, and the list went on. It was three extra days in Spain. Uh, the tour went on, and the tour guide helped with some phone numbers, but I took the kids. I brought them back three days later through New York with no reservations and back to Boston. But, you know, that's an extreme, but that's the reality too, um, where the tour company would just continue.
Yeah, they just continued, and I disappeared for a day or two, and luckily, there were two, three other, two other chaperones and from Georgetown, which is, which is why it's good to have, you know, at least two chaperones.
Absolutely.
But yet, when it came right down to the, the tour company wouldn't do that.
Oh, they don't, yeah, oh, yeah, I've been on, and, and it's always a passport thing, it's not always, but I've, I've had passport things as well, and, and they would, they would deliver that student to the airport on the way home and say, best of luck.
They just left them there? How, how would they do?
They, well, 'cause the tour would, would wind up at the airport, so they, so they could stay on the tour, or they could divert and figure out the passport problem, kind of. But ultimately, up to the, up to the student or the, um, the chaperones, the organizers of the trip, for sure.
Even on a non-school-sponsored trip?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's also something about going as a school, going as a French group, as a Spanish group, a Spanish students group, French students group. You, you, you go almost as a family, and when you come back and you share the experiences, so it was us, uh, you know, the, the, the tour company, tour director, but myself, and, well, whoever else will be with us and myself and the students. So it was that just great sense of unity, and then, and nobody else, usually, would be with us, it would be just us. So we shared everything together.
You shared it with the rest of your classes, of the students that didn't join you, didn't you show the slideshow?
Oh, yes, we, we did, we showed everything afterwards and invited other classes in and so on. But, but the, it was that, going as a school, it just felt, it was Georgetown High School, like, uh, like Georgetown High Quebec. We wouldn't be able to do that, or Georgetown High Puerto Rico, if we were to go, let's say, outside.
And they're, they're bound to the handbook, too, so.
School is still in session in Quebec.
Yes, we, we, we have, um, we bring a list of, uh, you know, we're being, we're bringing a behavioral policy that they sign, all about bullying, verbal, nonverbal, everything else, all sorts of things, alcohol, everything is included in the sign. And we also, uh, give the list to the nurse, so we have all of the medical issues, information from the nurse, and if they need to bring medication, how it's, how it's to be dealt with.
So to answer Michael's question, if, if, um, let's say in the summer, something came up and, you know, you wanted to take a group to Guatemala to build houses, you know, like a Habitat for Humanity project. Would you concert, would you consider that a school-sponsored trip?
I would, because the information is coming from an individual of agent of the town, uh, soliciting our students. And in that role as a teacher and as an employee, I would consider that a school trip.
So it, it, it's, for you guys, it's more about who's responsible, right? Who's, who's accountable, who's, who is accepting responsibility primarily for these kids?
So when a teacher is planning a field trip, they're like a travel agent, they move off Georgetown.
Right, they're an agent. Interesting discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think it's worth belaboring at this point.
No.
I think we should continue to review the policy.
Definitely, I agree with that.
You know what? I think it ever did it right. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, um, proposed trip to Puerto Rico for five days, dates to be determined.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but will be over, uh, the February twenty nineteen school vacation week, expecting no missed...
No lost schools.
Uh, missed school days, as presented by Spanish teacher Carolyn Giannini.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to hear how you go, how you...
I'm sorry, I love the trip, it's procedural, but I'm...
I know, we totally agree, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But I would like to know how it goes, like with you, with, uh, how many people actually...
How many people are interested, yeah, now that we can move forward on it, I didn't wanna just throw it out there yet, so now that we can go forward, I will keep you posted.
Yeah, just with all the trips that are going on, it would be interesting to see if, if that is the case, where we're...
Right, once the parents, now that, once the parents get involved, now we'll really see what's, what the numbers look like, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, what we can do, Dan, is, you know, you're gonna obviously stay in touch with them, and then we can just put it on an upcoming agenda, once you know, you know, what the numbers are, and we can just report.
Okay.
And we can also probably put it in the website.
Always.
To...
Oh, Jessica, yeah.
X amount of people have already signed up.
We can do a lot of that.
Hurry up, hurry up.
Don't miss out on this.
Told Tia you'd be coming, and she was like, you know, 'cause last year we talked about...
I know, I tried to get her to go to AP, but I couldn't convince her.
She, yeah, she's dumb as Spanish for now, but she enjoyed it, she totally did, you did a great job.
Oh, I'm glad she did, yeah. Yeah.
But thank you, thank you, I wish you guys...
Thank you all, and thank you, Dan, for your help.
Did over by, yes. I wish you the best.
Chloe too, she, she didn't take AP, so can't go either.
Oh, that's funny, yeah, well, they're seniors now, they're trying to, you know.
Yeah.
Did we group both trips?
They can't take two AP classes.
Now we need to talk to Caitlin.
Were you there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stay here, Dan, if you want, 'cause Caitlin's coming up. Okay, Caitlin, do you wanna come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mary.
We'll be in touch about it. Caitlin, we forgot to tell you that the meeting starts at six thirty-nine.
I thought it was seven, I feel horrible. Yeah, I, yeah, at least you had something else, it wasn't just me, yeah.
We would've come back.
Perfect.
Okay, so this is, uh, we've talked to you before about Plymouth, yeah, and it's, uh, before we, yeah, she's gonna be...
Yes.
You did this last year, right?
So this is a little different, it is the same thing, um, I came here for the past two years about the same festival, but this time we were actually invited, the Corral was invited to be the guest choir, which is really, a really big deal. So every year, and this is the forty-first festival that they've done, so they've been doing it for a really, really long time. Um, and the way that the festival works, which the past two years I've had five to six students attend, so, um, they invite students from the area to be a part of a large festival with students from Vermont, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and the area. And so we've had students do that in the past, but they always have a guest choir invited by the director from a local high school, and this is the first Massachusetts school, so that's a very exciting thing.
Did it have anything to do with you being, you being a...
I'm, he knows me, so that definitely was a helpful connection, but I'm happy to have that connection, because it's a really great opportunity.
I do wanna say to you, congratulations on being, and with the pop, yes, one odd. I was very impressed.
That's a fun summer.
Sure, that was very impressive.
Lots of singing.
Thank you. Good for you.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, this sounds, this sounds great, and have you talked to your kids about it?
I mentioned it, they were really excited, um, I think they're excited to just be able to showcase in such a big theater and in front of so many people, and it's gonna be a lot of work, um, it's getting concert music ready over a month before we usually have our concert music ready, but I think that's gonna be a good thing for them, and, um, it's a smaller group this year, which was also done on purpose. I think it's really challenging them, and they're more independent singers, so they're, it was, it was competitive, and they're working really hard, so I think they've earned this, and I'm very excited for them.
And you're gonna ask for help from the Georgetown music parents, which are always very generous?
Yes, yeah, they're doing a lot this year, but I did mention it to them, and they said they'll do what they need to do, because...
And the PTA maybe for the Boston...
Yeah, yeah, I figured I might, um, reach out, just so we don't spread the music parents too thin, because they're paying for a lot this year, and, um, trying to contribute to the trips and the auction.
And it's funny, all three of you, you and, um, your colleagues all mentioned a, a car wash.
Yes, I, so I talked to the students, and they had lots of fun ideas, they wanted to do a dog wash. They had lots of fun, exciting ideas, some interesting fundraising plans. Um, but we figured, you know, they're, they're paying for a lot, and this is a smaller scale than the past two trips, but I, it's important, because it's such a small group, that they all go, um, because when you miss one voice in a choir like that, it makes a huge difference. So, um, it's a thirty-dollar registration fee, but I'd really love to get as much of it covered as possible, so they can just go and enjoy it and not have to worry about any financial burden.
Right, so they'll bring a bag lunch, and then the dinner is included in that registration, which, that's nice.
Yeah, it's a pretty good deal, yeah, they get their music, they, um, clinicians work throughout the day, so they get a lot paid for.
What's the dress requirement?
So they do wear whatever they wear in our concerts, so it's white on top, or actually, it's what chorus was, white on top, black on bottom, they all have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have it in their closet somewhere, yeah.
I think this sounds, this sounds great, does anybody wanna talk, ask any particular questions about it? Okay. Um, thank you for, for doing this, I mean, this, you know, is a, is a great opportunity for the kids too, so I appreciate that you're taking the time to do that.
Definitely, nice recognition for, for you and your program and your kids.
Yeah, yeah, it is a big deal. Uh, so I will make a motion, it's November first?
November first.
Okay, for the, um, chorus to attend the Plymouth State University...
It's the All-New England Choral Festival.
All-New England Choral, uh, Festival on November first, twenty eighteen, as presented by Caitlin Donovan.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, I'm excited, I'll let you know how it goes.
Yeah, let us know how it goes.
Thank you. Let us know how you do with the PTA and the Georgetown music parents.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you wanna, well, you've got Dan up here, do you even wanna talk to him about, if they have any questions about the information that he put up with our college?
College admissions?
Oh, that is information.
Did you get my email?
Yeah, it was a nice email.
It was really neat to look at that, and I liked the, the hard copy of it, but it really put things in perspective for me, uh, just to see the, you know, versus, you know, the SAT scores versus the, um, versus UGPA and all that, and just, it was, and some of those kids were phenomenal, and they got denied, you know, so it just, yeah, I loved it, I thought it was great.
This is so helpful for even the next set of...
Yeah, that's...
I mean, I just, it's so comprehensive.
I actually told a couple of my friends, I said it, in case you haven't seen it, it's on the website, go look.
Yeah, you posted it, right.
Um, yeah, it is great, and it actually made me so proud to see the fantastic educational institutions that our kids are going to, the ones that they're applying to, you know, as well, and I love that, you know, they have those reaches, and, you know, I, I was really impressed with it.
And sometimes kids do make decisions based on finances. You know, it's nice to know that they're getting into these schools, even if they don't go to them, you know?
Right.
Because sometimes people, it is a financial, maybe there's multiple children in the family.
Oh, yeah.
They take whatever the, the deal is that they can get. But I think it is important to look at where we apply and where we get in, not necessarily where they are...
Right, 'cause there's... Yeah, there's other circumstances that go into that.
This is such a big help to families who are looking at colleges, and, I mean, it's a really difficult decision for people to make, just to apply, where to go.
Yes, it is.
And to me, the more data you have, I love data, I just, you know, I sat here, I couldn't, I couldn't stop.
You've never seen one of Pam's boards for the colleges.
Yes, our original college decisions had spreadsheets all over the place.
Did you make yours bigger? Why does yours look bigger?
Well, there're, there're a lot of different pages here, some of them are bigger, looks like this is, this is bigger.
So Dan, this comes out of the...
I love looking at this, thank you, I think this is gonna be a big, huge help to a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of families, so thank you.
I'm hoping it guides, uh, discussions with counselors to student, uh, you know, parents to counselors, you know, parents to students. I hope it helps put things in perspective. We know the great things we do within schools and where kids go, but I don't think it's advertised enough, and I think this helps advertise how amazing, um, the school that we have and where students go,
Yes.
uh, and where they get in and where they choose. I love the fact that they were selected for several schools, but chose something completely out of what field, and you can dissect this and what scores they have, so... dissect this and what scores they have, so each year, what we'll do is we'll um provide a summary of um university and college admissions, and uh, the profile for each class will be a little different, and it is, and I'm glad you brought that up, it is to help the current students and families make those decisions and kinda pick through this data, if you're a data person. But it is, uh, you know, it can be heavy reading or light reading, uh, the summaries are real informative, so we'll definitely do a each class as we go forward and post it, it's on the principal's blog right now, I will say that um, as I mentioned to Carol, that uh, when this document went up, uh, received over three hundred hits, there were over three hundred people by the end of the day that were checking it out, um, this beauty of the blog, I can see what the activity is.
That's good, so you are getting a lot of activity on the.
Over three hundred just on this document, not the other things that are on the blog, which was pretty amazing, so um, that's telling me that the families like the form of communication, and I should continue with this form of communication, and it's getting to them, uh, so we'll do it each year, and.
And Dan, these reports were generated through Naviance, right?
Correct, this is all done through the Naviance software that we do in our guidance department, and uh, I really have to quickly thank uh Sandra Kelly, who is the secretary in the guidance department for pulling this together, uh, Whitney, and she did a great job. So as we um introduce kids to Naviance in the tenth and eleventh grade to gather information and do self-discoveries and use the software, this is what it can produce for us.
So we really always had this information, but we're just putting it out to people.
That's right.
You know who else this will help, is families who are looking and deciding what high school to send their children to.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
You know, I think a lot of them would be very interested in this.
Right, because.
Thinking, you know, is a.
Yes.
Private school worth it, is it, all the kids in our Puffa School are going to these fine institutions and.
Educators aren't the best at marketing their schools or telling the story.
I'm a little biased, but you know, yeah.
Yeah, so not to put um Principal Richards on the spot, but I'm gonna ask you this. I don't know, yeah, I don't know if you are aware of uh the tradition that Georgetown has, is we have a college board outside of the um guidance office. And it always seems to be a little bit of a commotion when that comes up, there are some people that love it, and there are some people that really hate it.
Are you talking parents or students?
Well, there are students.
There are students who don't like it, because if they're not, if they're not inclined to go to college, or they don't really, their name is never up there.
There's, it's not like a, either you love it or you hate it, there isn't really an in-between.
There's not a bit of that, I agree.
So, how, what are your thoughts on it, like what did your previous school do to advertise, like how well the kids were, if anything?
It's a uh, a great question, and the schools have struggled with it because um, the students have worked so hard, and this is their capstone moment, um, just wanna call it that, to go up on that board, and there's a lot of pride, and uh, some schools are actually switching, getting rid of the board, and doing um a signing day, like when an athlete signs a contract, it's a big deal.
Like we had with.
Yeah, with Kyle.
Why don't we celebrate students in that fashion, and they keep it a secret where they're going, and they announce on that day, so some schools are going in more of a celebration mode, uh, keep the secret and announce it at the um big ceremony to the entire community and friends. Uh, so people, some folks have gone in that direction, and um, so I think it's a tough call, because you want all kids to feel successful on whatever they do, on, and going to colleges and universities isn't the answer for everyone.
Sure.
And we wanna celebrate their success just as much, uh, so we have to find a way to include all kids, to make sure that board, or that signing day, or whatever it may end up being, reflects all of our students, because they all have worked hard, regardless of an institution that they may get into, or a vocation, um, or whether it's the military, it all needs to be celebrated, and I think that's what we struggle with. What does that look like on a board, or a signing day, or an announcement day?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of schools where, like the, you know, Dr. Seuss is, oh, the places they'll go, and then people have a square, and you know, they can, they can decorate, so if you, if you're gonna go to work, you can put that there, if you're going to the army, you put that there. And then I've seen others that have, you know, just, you know, future plans of the class of two thousand nineteen.
Right, and they're just listed generically.
Yeah, but it's okay to list the colleges, if that's what you wanna do, but, or bright futures, or something like that, that just gives, it, you know, so if somebody's going to the Marines, they get to put their little, you know, Marine sticker on there, you know?
And I know that um Principal Lucia had uh said, you know what, okay, there's, there's this commotion within the community, let's put it out to the kids.
Yeah, he did a survey, and the kids wanted it.
And the kids um.
Not all of them.
Did want it, right, but the majority of them wanted it, which is why we did um keep it, but I I just, it seems like every year.
It's commotion.
Yeah, especially for people that their child, it's the first one to graduate, you know, because they might not, I mean, I know, just as a visitor in the school, I do love to look at it, and you know, it it, you know, but I can see the point that some people have.
But now that there's other options, I think maybe the students could take a look at the other options, 'cause I'm not sure any of their options were suggested to them at the time.
You know, the survey was a survey, but.
Right, it was just a survey, border, you know, it's kind of like one of the things Dan talks a lot about, is student voice, means, so, so you get some information, it's like, well, what what do we take from this?
Not, do you like it or don't you like it, but what do we take from it, what is, are there things we can think of to take into consideration everybody's thoughts?
Yeah, right. Well, thank you for answering that, I'm sorry that I just kinda put it out there.
The board is on the wrong side of the wall.
Oh, right.
Oh, right.
Are you allowed to sign in just to see the board?
Well, now you're right. Now you're right, you gotta sign in to go see the board.
So true.
We'll have to put it somewhere else, if that's what we decide to do.
Yeah.
But this is great.
I love this.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
I didn't catch that, Michael, I didn't think of that.
So, um, Mr. Murphy, you walked in, I don't know if your ears were ringing earlier.
Oh, right.
But we were discussing with Chloe Martins, how there's a bunch of new clubs going on, and I had heard that there's a stand-up, um, a stand-up comedy club that you are going to try to get off the ground.
I put the idea out there, and we wanna gauge interest, so uh, several students came up to me today saying I signed up, I signed up.
Yeah, I heard, Chloe said she signed up, didn't she?
Yes.
Chloe said she signed up, I I talked to a couple of kids today.
You know, I'd have to figure out how it would uh run the first year, but, you know, just, if I'm just kinda spitballing ideas, um, it gives, gives students, and I, I don't know if we meet weekly, but give students a sense of stand-up comedy, and um, a little bit of history of stand-up comedy, go to some comedians, classic comedians, things like that, delivery, uh, with the idea that we'd be writing jokes, build a set list, and then um, I would think that if, if students would be willing, we could put together a night, or we uh, we could do a stand-up comedy night.
I think it'd be fun, I think it sounds great.
So you're not talking improv, right, you're talking stand-up?
Yeah, I know, stand-up comedy, so the idea of, you know, not only, not only writing material, but memorizing your material, and working on your timing.
Delivery.
I think it's great.
I wish the club in New Hampshire.
I was telling tales out of school.
Oh, that's right.
I said, Jo had mentioned to me that sometimes you guys used to go up and do it, so I said, I think it's a real interest of Mike's.
Yeah, you know what? That it was, it was kind of a bucket list type thing, so um, a few years back, uh, Jo Vitella and myself, we, you know, we talk about public speaking, and um, especially as an English teacher, it's one thing to talk to, talk to talk, it's another thing to walk the walk, so, kinda said, you know, I wanna, I wanna try this, you know, and with mixed results, I mean, there were some nights where.
Jo was like, they didn't laugh.
But then there were some nights where, you know, um, you know, you kinda get that reaction, there were other nights where there were literally two people there, you know, so, but, you know, there are people that are out every night, trying to, you know, hone their craft and skill, but uh,
That's great.
And I think of the big, the bigger picture is, we're gonna have students who are are gonna, you know, have practical public speaking, whether it be uh, a family event, best man, maid of honor, um, you know, and if they can feel comfortable enough, if they can kinda work in humor to maybe, you know, uh, break the ice, and uh, yeah, I think it's a good skill.
Yeah, I think it's great. Very different.
Can I just um ask Principal Richards, is there anything on the website that tells uh parents what clubs are available, or what might be available for their students, for their children?
So I did post what clubs we currently have, and we just had our uh club fair today, so I.
Oh, you did, okay.
Well, it was today, yeah.
Yeah, it was today.
Uh, that I have to go through and take a look and see where kids have signed up, and uh let's hope I can fund them all, and get the biggest bang for the buck of who signed up for which clubs, but that will be posted uh once that's finalized.
Oh, good, great, great, thank you.
Good.
Yes, I, I knew the signup was today, but I didn't know what clubs were there.
So.
Uh, I do also wanna mention that um Georgetown was recognized again.
Yes.
Um, this year in the um ranking of Boston Magazine's top um public schools in Boston, um, out of a hundred and fifty high schools, we were marked uh thirty-two, which I was very proud of. And as the superintendent noted in the notes, fourth in the um North Shore um area, so that was, was great, and I think we, we do just wanna say that the um, there's rankings from all different, you know, um, magazines out there, and they all have different criterias, and um, but still, I mean, we have to.
We're on the list every year.
Yeah.
And the place may vary, but they do change the criteria, so it is hard.
It's just funny because it's year after year. Well, because some people will say, well, they were thirty-two here, but we're eighty-five here, and I, you have to explain that different criterias for different magazines and stuff, but again.
And also, within the same magazine, Boston Magazine uses different criteria every year.
Yes, they, right, and it does list right in the article what they were looking at, but I was very proud of that.
I was too, yeah.
And the kids were too.
Mm-hmm.
And people were talking about it on Facebook, so it's out there, you know, that.
Well, the positive stuff really do need to get out there.
Yep. Um, so we're gonna talk tonight about um something that we've been kind of going back and forth with, Blizzard Bags.
Yeah.
Um, so as you know, we've had a couple of rough winters, and the kids are getting out later, and um, so I don't know who actually came up with the idea of Blizzard Bags a few years back, it's when I started hearing them.
New Hampshire was doing them for a few years.
About it, but then it's, then I think Burlington was the first one, Wakefield was one of the first ones that I had heard about.
Still doing it, I think.
Yeah, Burlington is.
Burlington's not doing it, I talked to Eric Conti, the superintendent there, he said the pushback from the community was significant.
Because.
Very interesting.
Because you're putting burden on families.
Sure.
Right, people like, a lot of times people like to do snow days, they do family things, and now you're basically saying that the kids have to be home, plus, you know, teachers are supposed to be, in most places are online, but the likelihood of, you know, really, it's like homework, some people buy the homework.
But it's not that the assignment is due.
Yeah.
Those are all the things you have to, you have to pick, so I, I think, did I send you the questions I sent out to the superintendents?
Yes. So I've got, probably gotten back already four that actually do it, most are saying, oh, please, we're studying it, we wanna study it too, give, share your data, please.
You know the ones with the four, can you think of them?
Um, uh, let's see, who?
Wakefield?
You know, they're not school districts that I, you know, they don't, they didn't sign, Wakefield has not responded yet, but I do think that they do them. I think Ames Ferry does it, uh, Cindy Tamar in Melrose does it too, but she hasn't responded yet.
Masco do them?
Hmm?
Masco?
Masco did not respond yet, so, you know, again, I I asked a number of questions, so you're gonna have to have time to sit down and think about it. Um, assistant super, one of the assistant superintendents in one of the districts that responded, I think North Adams does it, um, and she answered the question today, and said, I'd be happy to do a phone call with you. Um, but I think, to your point, Barbie, you think it's getting to be more and more interesting, but the ones that have sent me their policies and their PowerPoints and all of that, there's none that are completely consistent. Um, but, you know, I, as I, you saw, I asked them, well, what were the advantages and disadvantages, and most people say the, you know, obviously the advantages, you can count it as a school day. But a lot of people also say one of the challenges is there's nothing that really replaces the working relationship between a, a teacher and a student, so many have, like, after three days, it kicks in, um, you know, some people provide it, um, just electronically, I haven't gotten anybody yet that's talked about this uh, company that you had mentioned that Wakefield does, um, most are district-created, you know, um, the question about whether or not uh they differentiate, they, they all claim that they differentiate. The assignments are posted, you know, in different ways.
Right.
Um, sorry, but I think it's becoming more, people are studying it more and more because of exactly what you said, the.
Well, when you and I talked about it a couple of years ago, I know we both had, um, we, we were both questioning the rigor.
Rigor, right.
And that is a concern that I have too, and I also agree with you that um, an assignment doesn't replace the interaction, you know, teacher, student, and then.
But I see it like a substitute teacher, if you think about it like.
But I'm not against them either. The devil's in the details, because most of what they tell me the challenges are, is the variation between what teachers give and don't give, and, you know, so my question to them was, well, how much of their day are they actually engaged in schoolwork, in some cases, it's twenty minutes. So, you know, and then does every, every teacher gives an assignment, so it depends on the assignment, some kids get buried, other kids, you know, don't have enough to do. And I think the other thing that happens is that, you know, the, the issue of, you know, what's the responsibility of the teacher? Right, like, are they just to be online, or, you know, some, somebody put out that um, that didn't respond in this, but I talked to them at some other point, uh, they actually had the teachers do, had to plan some activity that they were gonna engage in, because classroom teachers have kids that they're gonna interface with, but what if you're a psychologist, or what if you're, you know, a behaviorist, you know, so they get to have a snow day, and the classroom teachers have to work, so I, I think the devil's in the detail, the devil's in the details, uh, you know, I mean, I always get myself into these things, but today, you know, I put all that stuff out, right, and uh, Tom Scott, who's superintendent's um you know, executive director, said, oh, the commissioner's putting together a committee, I'd love to suggest your name. That's what happens when you go out, you, yeah, because, right, because they, they don't call them Blizzard Bags, they call it like extended time, or something like that. So I think the commissioner's wanting to put together um, a small committee of people, some that are using it, and some that are looking for it. So, it looks like my name is on that short list, so I'll keep you posted on that if that ever materializes, but it'll help us with our research.
Yeah, but I do, I do think we should put a committee together.
Look at it, very great.
And I think it's doable to put a committee together, and, and if we go for it, it should be the school year.
This school year or next year?
No, I think I.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, I, I'm coming from a district that had more than ten days off.
Yeah, that's totally different.
You know, and that, we ended up June twenty-nine.
That's too, that's too crazy.
And then we also start, and we did Saturdays, and we also started early, so the vacation time was really shortened. So I can see where in that case, that the Blizzard Bags might come in hand for some of the days.
Yeah, the only thing I have a problem with is like, okay, so are we just saying, we have to go to school this many days, so let's.
Just check off the box.
Yes, like, that's, I don't want people to think that that's what we're interested in, is just saying, oh, okay, you know, but then I have read the uh comments on like Facebook, and the parents seem to, you know, be okay with it, and say, you know what, if we can, if we can do that, then I'd be fine with it. Um, but I, I, I don't want that to be interpreted that way, that we're just looking to.
Right, just to check it off.
To check it off, like that, we, we did this Blizzard Bag, so that's comparable to a day at school.
But I think if they, if they see what the purpose is, and also just, you know, ending the school year at a reasonable time.
Right.
As well.
Yeah.
You know.
I had spoken to someone who works in the Masonic District, and they explained to me what they did last year, I don't know if they've changed it, or they're looking at changing it, um, but to me, it didn't sound like something we wanted to do, it focused on like social curriculum, where the kids would watch a video at home and do a written response.
Yeah, that's it.
And the way they would balance the workload is everybody in the school would have responsibilities, so the school nurse, the behaviorist, the psychologist, would have a certain amount of students that they would have to, like, read there and respond to.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
That's how they got.
So that's how everyone got included.
That's how everybody had involved.
Um, I don't know, I don't think that's really, where, where, I don't think that's what we're looking for.
So some students in a class might have the nurse evaluating their assignment, and some students would have the teacher evaluating their assignment.
And, and the work was not content-specific to their course load, or.
Right.
What they were, that's how they equalize it.
Is it the kid that picks the, the smallest straw gets the, the principal to? I don't know, I'd see Dan doing it, but they uh, they, there was a lot of variation, there were a lot, there was a lot of variation in um the uh, the ti, you know, the times that were required, there was a lot of variation in, you know, usually it wasn't the first snow day, you know, it was usually after a couple, right? Um, so that, that was pretty consistent, um, but yeah, I mean, I'll put everything on a, a sheet, summarize it, but I, I thought it would help us you know, 'cause I, some of the stuff I'm gathering is gonna help us with, you know, with our, you know, with our study.
Well, with this, I think this would be um the same type of committee as like the start-school-later committee would be, so it would be like an extension of the school committee, we would approve this committee to just be, you know, from us, from one date to this date, come back, come back. Come back, come back with, um, with a report, with your recommendation. But I think this early in the, in the year and with the amount of people talking about it, I do think it's something we could accomplish. I mean, do you guys feel that we could?
Is it procedurally, is it just, this is ten steps down the road, but is it just a policy change that makes it okay? Is that the only requirement or are there other?
Wouldn't it just be a policy?
Uh, you mean what?
Blizzard Bags count as a day?
And then we'd have to write the procedures that would go with it, but yeah.
But that's just.
But we would have to talk to the union.
Yeah, one of the shows that, well, we would have the union be, Joe and I talked about this last year and I, we had said we were gonna set up a committee. Um, but one of, I think there's some guidance coming out from DESI. Because there's, there's been a lot of, you know, questions about, well, what, what is the level of rigor you require? You know, are there any parameters, or do we just get to pick the ones that we want? And I think DESI's working, and probably that's what they're, what I would be involved in, is figuring out, well, what. You know, what it, what should the policies be and where, where would it be appropriate to just leave certain decisions up to districts? You know, the state doesn't wanna mandate all of this, they just wanna set up a few guidelines, but that's what I think people are asking for.
Colin, um, can you chime in on this a little bit as Director of Curriculum?
Yeah, so I, um, had a curriculum directors meeting last year, uh, tail end of last year, after everyone had had a, that really nasty winter. There was a, I can't remember who it was and what district he was representing, but he kind of shared their plan for Blizzard Bags. And it was really an online component where each teacher, they were a Google school and they were using Google Sites, so. The students would be responsible for, if they're a middle school or high school student, logging into their Google site, finding the Blizzard. With the extended day, whatever they were calling it, you know, page and completing that assignment for the day. Um, a couple of the caveats that they had were, um, nothing was ever due the next day. Some things were more of a concurrent project that would kind of, if there were multiple days, it would span and it would be a, a longer term project. So that, you know, student sick that day, or I wasn't, you know, I, whatever reason, I couldn't complete the assignment. They weren't, you know, dinged on the very next day, it was kind of a rolling deadline or due date. All interesting ideas, but I had similar, uh, questions about the amount of time students are engaged in productive, actual work. I see nothing is going to replace a, a school day in front of your teachers. But when you're going to school until June twenty-ninth, how productive is the last, or the last three days of school anyhow?
The thing is too, if it's not due that next day, which I agree, it probably shouldn't be, but then when you go back to school, you're gonna have other homework.
Yeah. What's assuring you that the kid did any work that day?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
You know, and it, so that, that I think is, is one of the things that definitely came up. Um, in some, most people, it is graded.
Yeah.
It is graded. And one had this, said what they do is if the student doesn't turn it in within whatever the parameters are. They get counted as absent that day.
As an unexcused absence?
Excused absence, so you didn't, you know. Again, I'm just, that's, I think people are.
You gotta look at all the different.
It's, it's not a straightforward thing, there's a lot of different nuances to it, right?
Well, I think that was one of the components in Burlington, why they stopped doing it is. A such a small percentage of kids were doing the work.
But the thing is, if it's a policy.
Right, but it, but you know, it's like anything else, when you make a rule about it, then you're always gonna deal with the, with the conflict around that.
Especially, I suppose, if it's, if it's new, you know, and you have to really. Make it work, and so when something that's new, they're like, oh.
Some kids would love to do it, you know, could you incentivize it, so if you did it, you got credit for something, right?
Well, the interesting thing, a couple of parents had said to me, no, I'd rather them just miss the day because. I'm most likely, like the parents were saying, they would most likely be home with the kids, like working from home. And they only have one computer, so they'd be fighting for the computer. So it was interesting just to hear, I'm like, oh, right, yeah.
What about kids that don't have access to computers?
I'm sure there's few of them.
You know, they didn't get the registration because it was, they didn't. Let's do that, let's set up a committee.
So who on, on the school committee would like to be on it? You would?
Yeah.
Does anybody else want to?
Sure.
You gotta have two, you can't have more than two.
No more than two.
You wanna do it too, Suzanne?
Sure.
Okay, so the, the que, and we can find some teachers to do it, the question is, um, do we wanna have parents? And if so.
I think we should, just to get a good.
We just put something out and see if anybody's interested.
I can ask Margaret and.
I mean, I, I'd prefer not to do a twenty member committee.
No. Well, you have to, yeah, you have to.
When we did Dan, I wanted to, I do it, but. So, so, like.
Should be advertised in the.
Say you want five parents, some come first serve.
So we think administrator.
We want them across, we want them across the.
Grade levels.
Level, right?
I would say like, a parent in the lower level parent, you know, lower level elementary. And then, you know. And then middle high, middle and high school and administrator. And then a couple of teachers.
Gotta put Colin on there.
I know.
He's getting very quiet.
I don't, I don't wanna ask him in front of everybody, but.
Oh, I was going to.
I think he probably knows that's coming. Watch out, Jack. I was gonna say, if we need modified assignments, we might need you, Jack.
So you're gonna put a blog out about it?
Yeah. And we'll put it in Margaret's this week and Dan's blog.
And then the morning. But again, if that, if this is something that we do want to possibly see implemented this year, then I think. You're, you guys are gonna have to. Like tomorrow, start figuring it out.
Well, it'll take us a little time to get some people.
No, I know, but. In reality.
It can move pretty.
Because between the whole policy process, like to, to establish a new policy, you have the two readings.
Honestly, I would rather do it right than rush to get it done, you know, I mean, if we didn't do it this year, I mean, we might be able to. Especially since in the last couple of years, winter didn't even start until January.
Right.
Um, but, you know, we certainly, I just don't wanna rush through it, not consider all the things, 'cause one of the things I did see.
But that's the thing, if the committee comes back and says, you know what, we didn't have enough time.
Right.
To do it, at this point in time, we have no way to, you know.
We're gonna keep working on it or whatever. Yeah, because one of the things that the districts who have been doing that are in their second or third year, they said they made massive. Recommendations and changes to it, like that they, there was nobody that said, oh, yeah, we started it, we were doing it three years, everything's running smoothly.
But we learned from their mistakes.
But that's right, that's why, that's why I asked those, that's why I asked those specific questions, 'cause, you know, it, it just gets at, at that.
Um, just one thing to think about, what, um, for the committee to think about, I guess. Is how would IEPs be impacted? And service will agree.
But that's kinda true, 'cause they do get their services. Situation where you're doing compensatory, that, I, nobody mentioned that in the, uh, talk, nobody mentioned that.
Couple of people did mention that in the Facebook page.
Yeah, but I mean, the people on collecting information.
Okay, well, that's great, thank you, thank both of you for, um, volunteering. And you too, Colin.
And Jack. We're the merry, Dan, you wanna join us?
That's a definite no.
Dan said no? I've never heard Dan say no.
Well, he said, no, thank you, he's all sad.
And so I take Belmont, never did Blizzard Bags.
Was it a discussion? Like, did it ever come up?
No, they didn't have the discussion on it. I think surrounding districts did, uh, they just didn't join in on the conversation. Burlington is, uh, another example that they were looking at.
Okay, well. Good, I think it's, I think it's great. Yeah, you don't have school tomorrow, right?
Well, there you go, we're gonna start adding you.
Blizzard Bag starts tomorrow.
Well, look at all that you're gonna learn, Suzanne, you can just bring it to Antover.
It is worth checking in on our. I'm sure, I would assume some would be affected.
Oh, 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 maybe, maybe, yeah.
What do you mean?
Sure, our choice students.
They're, right, about tomorrow, yeah. I just hope the staff and the students that are impacted by this are okay, it's.
I know.
You know, it's, it's hard, and even like Merrimack College, I'm thinking, they were trying to tell all those kids to go home, but it's like, how do you tell people that are from California or? You know?
They were opening up some schools, I think.
I did hear that, yeah.
Wow, that's just amazing.
Scary, yeah.
Tomorrow could be very difficult.
Do you want me to give you a very quick update on the buses?
Yes.
Are you interested in that?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem at all on the middle school buses, the numbers are very low. Twenty, thirty-four, twenty-two, thirty, and thirty-three. So if you fit, they usually don't try to put seventy-seven kids of that size, but, you know, they, there's no issues with that. Um, so I talked to Cindy, uh, tonight, we have, uh, the list of the kids that are waiting. We have roughly between three that want the convenience run and, uh, the others, we roughly have twenty. Twenty families or students. Um, Nancy put together a spreadsheet of the kids on the waiting list and Cindy assigned the buses. So what she could get done, because she was dealing with this crisis in North Andover too. Um, she feels confident that she can get, uh, at least half of those kids on the bus for Monday. Um, based on the number she gave me today, um, her, the issue is, is, the only issue is really bus one. And that's really not such a serious issue, but she's got a couple of buses where she can put thirty kids on, twenty-two kids. So it, it really does seem like people registered.
And didn't.
Didn't ride. So we've been having this ongoing discussion about, can we charge a registration fee? Not a bus fee, a registration fee, because we've been collecting all this information from other districts and they don't have a registration fee. But they have a late fee. So if you don't let people know, you know, the district know by such and such a date, you pay the, you pay a late fee. To me, I don't see a difference, right, you know, and, 'cause it's a, really a, a processing fee, right? It's, that's not, it's not a fee to ride the bus, it's a processing fee. So, 'cause, you know, Barry comes in in the summer, we, you know, we're engaged, Nancy does a lot with the buses in the summer. You know, we have to send out the bus passes, all that stuff, but, you know, is it, is it worth looking in, we're gonna look, Nancy, sorry, Suzanne. Suzanne is going to contact, uh, Jay Sullivan at the MS, uh, the, um, Mas, but, well, DESI, DESI. Um, and just run it by him, I mean, you know, it's, you know, we don't wanna do something that's not kosher. And I'm, you know, I'm not recommending it to you at this point, but I'm thinking, well, if people had to.
There has to be a way to deter them.
Had to, you know, pay a, a non-refundable fee to register, no matter what age you are. You know, maybe people would think twice, because it really has caused a, a significant issue this year.
How much are the fees, like in the, the other districts?
Oh, the other districts are crazy.
I mean, bus fees or just a registration?
We don't have, we can't find anybody that has a registration fee, but late fees are fifty, skin in the game, that's what it is, skin in the game.
There's like a, a family cap.
There's a family cap, yeah, yeah.
If it costs like fifty bucks, you're gonna.
Yeah, 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 before you just sign.
So that's a thought, because it, like I said, it really caused trouble this year, we had a bunch of kids who didn't get on the buses. Because literally, they registered and we took people in the order they registered.
So they registered it as a just in case.
Well, some people must have, because, you know, to go from a bus that was supposed to have eighty-five kids on it to thirty. Something, something happened there, right? Um, I think people.
This is at the middle school?
No, no, this is at the elementary, middle school's tiny numbers.
Right, but so, there's only, you had eighty-five register and only thirty are riding at the elementary?
It, it, it's probably a little different, it's more like fifty, 'cause she said, I've got thirty seats.
Oh, you were saying thirty seats?
She said, I've got thirty seats left, so that's forty, I went over personally the first three days of school and counted the kids that got on the bus. Personally did that, because I, I said, I, those buses don't look like there's seventy-seven kids on them, right? So first day is, you can't really do much the first day, 'cause everybody brings their kids to school. But the rest of the, the rest of the time, we ca, counted them and generally I put them in my phone, so generally it was anywhere from fifty-five to seventy-four. Right, so this week, it sort of leveled out where we kinda had a sense of, you know, it's, it's a, there's a range, but it's not a, a huge range. Um, so as I said, bus one, you know, we, we think we can accommodate, and one of the things that Cindy said was, that's the bus we have the. Eight or nine convenience kids on, we might be able to move that to a different bus, which, which would not make that, which, which would not make that bus crowded by any, any means. Um, so I, I'm anticipating that, uh, by Monday, everybody that is waiting for a bus will have a bus. Right, and so that's been our only real problem with the buses this year, you know, I mean, all the other things were not. At least we weren't hearing about them.
So no bus forum this year?
No bus forum this year. Well, remember, we, remember, we, remember, we addressed a lot of the issues, right? So if you look, think back to the forum year, you know, how do you, they, people disagreed with how we calculated it, I didn't hear anybody. You know, in fact, one, one person talked to me and I said, well, you know, according to this, you're one point two miles. But being able to say, look, I'll put you on the waiting list for the convenience run, because if we can get you on that, you're good to go. Um, if we didn't have that, that would be prickly. Um, the convenience run made a big difference, even though lots of people don't, not, there aren't a lot of people that take it, that made a huge difference. Um, the, uh, the routes themselves have been configured to the things that make a lot more sense. And I think we've even had parents commenting on that, that the routes seem like they make more sense this year. Um, so a lot of those, the on-off thing, the first on, last off, I'm gonna get that right, but. The only one we, we were not able to fix at this point in time is the old Jacobs Road route. But according to Cindy, you know, the route, it's reversed, you know, it's, you don't have that. That's the one, because of just the location of where it goes, it does take a little bit longer, nobody's, no one's complaining about how long the kids are on the bus. Right, so those were all things that, over time, I don't know how we did it, but we rectified those. Now the issue is the registration process and making sure that if you are entitled to a bus, you get on the bus. Next year, what we will probably do is we will not, we will not do anything with the convenience run until we know that every kid that. But remember, we built the routes and then we had all these people coming out of the woodwork at the end. The other thing is, we'll continue with the online process, but some peoples, it went to spam, some people weren't expecting that. So, so Nancy had a good idea that, you know, a letter will go out, you know, to people and say, okay, you're gonna, you know, within the next week. You're gonna be sent this, look for this email, um, just so we can make sure that, you know, we didn't do that this year, we just sent it out.
Well, that kinda goes against the whole, like, trying to save some money, though.
I know, that's what I said to Barry, 'cause even when we sent the pass out, it's the same thing, right? You know, you're, you're still sending a letter out, but I think the one thing that was good with the online registration is people did it right away. Cause before, people would get it in the mail, put it in their mail pile, and then maybe they'd find it in the summer.
Maybe that's why they registered too, it was easy.
It was easy, that we think that too. So that's why I think we've got some, and there's, are some really great documents that some districts have put together that are crystal clear. You know, that I think we could take advantage of using some of those, just to make that, the process really clear. But yeah, I mean, other than that, I haven't, it, you know, I used, was dealing with a lot of appeals in the past. You know, people will email me and then, you know, like, some lady was, called me today about her daughter had a bus stop, you know, for so many years. And then somehow they took it away, so I asked Cindy, she goes, you know what, I gotta put it back, I, you know, just. So, you know, things get resolved pretty quickly, you know, Barry, Cindy, Nancy, it's been like a, you know, a real team effort. Um, but, you know, I really, I'll be mu, I'll feel much better when all those kids are entitled to the bus, get on it. The other thing that's very interesting to me and all the stuff we collected is a lot of people only do two miles. So you get a free bus if it's more than two miles, but everyone else, everyone else pays, everyone else pays. Um, not that I wanna get into the bus fee business, uh, but, you know, it's, it's interesting to me when I see, you know, I mean, some of these fees are astronomical. I mean, I would not wanna ask our families for that kind of money, even if they could afford it.
I think our community is a little, you know, is different, like you can't compare it to.
No.
Say, you know, a Beverly or a.
No.
Because our, you know, sidewalks, uh, some of our, it's more country, you know, so I think when the committee did decide to go. To lower it, lower the distance, it was based on that.
Yeah, it was safety, it was safety.
Definitely.
And that makes sense, but I think it's interesting, like, I think a lot of districts are also looking at as a revenue, a revenue source, which we didn't really choose to do. Um, and again, if I were gonna recommend to you a registration fee, it wouldn't be to make money, it would be really to.
To, to.
To be able to, you know. Have people really think about, you know, if you're gonna ride or you're not gonna ride.
Beginning, I was concerned, I'm like, do we need another bus? Because that would definitely not be within.
Imagine if all those people registered and actually did take the bus, that would.
Right, well, that would be a different story, right, well, we would've probably had to go back to sort, sort of doing one of the buses.
Right, like, oh, like we did a couple of years ago.
I mean, but at the same time, you know, I, I knew that number wasn't right, I knew it. But, you know, Cindy, Barry and others are in a situation where you can't guess at that. Right, and it just must have happened that, you know, maybe people didn't, just decided not to ride it at the point, but. I think we gotta figure that out, but I'm, I think all in all, you know, it wasn't as crazy with the buses as it's been in the past, and I'm happy to see that.
It's interesting too, though, I'm thinking that a lot of people don't realize that the bus, we're only legally obligated to. Provide a bus twelve K to, K to six. And I, I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think, um, that's. And I, I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think um, that's, the things that I've looked at on Facebook, it doesn't seem that a lot of people understand that. I do think that's an important thing, because there are many times that our budget has been, you know, really bad. And we've always throw, we've always considered it, it's been at the bottom, but that certainly wouldn't be something I would want to do, but it has come up and it has as an option.
Yes, and we balance it against the other things that students are charged for, you know, whether it's parking or um, sports, certainly. And that, and the technology, you know, buying your own iPad, so, yeah, the community's been very, very generous, but, you know, but that is, I, I know why some districts do it. It's because they offset the cost of their, their transportation, you know.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, that it's not as, you know, there are some, some things we need to, you know, figure out, but Cindy's great, she's great too.
Cindy's been great, and the parents have been, um, you know, from mostly patient, I mean, you know, I, you know, I really feel like, you know, they didn't have to be so patient, because they're looking at it going, hey, I'm entitled to this bus pass. And, you know, I don't wanna wait two weeks, it's inconvenient for me, but everybody has understood, and that's why I said to Cindy today, I said, Cindy, we have to resolve this by the end of this week, because it's two weeks in now. You know, we can't wait a month. But I am, I am working with her again on just discussing that old Jacobs Road situation. And if we can't rectify it this year, you know, the, the, a couple of the parents had some ideas, cause you know, you don't wanna upset everybody on the bus now. But, but at the same time, you know, if there's tweaks, maybe we could look at it, but maybe in, maybe next year, we can sort of really make that a commitment, cause we really were able to accomplish it on all the buses except that one.
Well, so the rest of the buses, is it a setup where the first picked up, they're not, they're not riding the bus long both ways?
Right, okay, so like the first picked up.
Yeah.
Will be the first dropped up, so it's all reversed except this one. Yeah, and that's, that's what Cindy told me today, she said, yeah, go through the buses, I said, yeah, that's the only one I can't get there. So, you know, I mean, we met with Cindy a lot last year, you knew that, and we identified, you know, what, what are the things we really wanna have done? And, I mean, the, the bus company delivered on all of them, so, you know, I think that's part of why we, we didn't have as many issues this year. Cause I think the things we wanted done were things that made sense.
Well, they increased their rate quite a bit, so.
True, them being so kind.
Okay, that's great, so I'll keep you posted, but.
Yeah, thank you.
So far, so good, thanks. So we do have a um, donation that we need to accept, is this an anonymous donation?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So we have um, a resident Emily Sheehan that would like to donate a, a bench in memory of Steve Nazaro, who is a, was a Georgetown dad, very um, active in the school community, as well as the um, soccer community. He passed away last year very unexpectedly, uh, and that's a very kind gesture, I think that's, that's wonderful, and I'm sure um, his wife and children would love to see that um, happen. So this is going to be located by the Penbrook Soccer Field?
Yeah, so it's actually on the, on the plateau. It's up where the, it's going to be up on the, the one that looks over the soccer field, like where the batting cage is, so we're putting it right up there, so anybody wants to sit on it will overlook the soccer field.
And what, is it like a, is it?
You know what, I, I can't believe I didn't put that in, Mike sent me a picture of it.
I wonder if it's like a Mike Dornhoes, like, is it?
Oh, it's here, yeah, it's right there.
Oh, Nancy got it in there, good.
Okay, and does it have, does it have?
I think they're gonna put a little. I'm sure there will be, cause on this picture there is.
That's very nice.
That was very generous.
Old Pembroke have, have benches just like that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the donation of a bench in memory of Mr. Steven Nazaro by resident Emily Sheehan, which will be located by the Penbrook Soccer Field. So, move, second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was, that's gonna be beautiful. We have several nice benches around Pembroke that have been donated by families and people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Body benches, yeah.
Okay, I don't think we have anything else, does anyone wanna talk about anything else that I'm missing, are you thinking? So uh, thank you for, again, for the blizzard bag thing, I look forward to that, because I do think it's a really good, yeah, I think it's a, it's something that can lead to being.
We should definitely, at least look at it, right?
Yeah. And again, I just wanna say that tomorrow night's the first home game for the football team, it's at seven o'clock, and we play Lowell Catholic.
And there's a boys soccer also tomorrow, just pre, just before.
Just three forty-five?
Oh, three forty-five, okay.
Oh, nice.
So it will go boys soccer then football, so.
That's great, okay, well, I wish them the best, uh, both teams.
What's your one?
Let's go Royals. Let's go Royals. Okay, so I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty, there is no reason to have an executive session, so um, this is a motion to end the meeting. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.